Okay, welcome everyone to our second meeting of May. And I guess we'll have the city clerk do the roll call.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Delory. Councilmember Mandel.
Present.
Councilmember Trustin.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
The record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Corporation Council Simone Freeman will have a salute to the flag.
City Manager Gaden, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Mayor, be yourselves if you're not actively.
Okay. A couple of things before we get started. We have two unanimous consent items for tonight. Since we normally would get the signatures before and since we're not meeting in person, we'll have to do these by motion. So I need a motion. The first one is going to be an unanimous consent item for a resolution affirming the city manager's local emergency orders regarding limitation of beach access and modified boardwalk opening. Do I have a motion for this one? Does somebody introduce this one?
I will.
Do I have a second? Anyone? For this, you have to unmute.
Sorry, I will.
Thank you. Oh, and Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
We also have item number five, which is a resolution affirming the swearing in and appointment of a new class of special patrolman and authorized city manager to appoint additional special patrolmen pursuant to section 53 of the charter. Move this motion.
I will.
Who was that?
Mike and I both did it same time. I'll second it.
Okay. Delory and Mandel. Okay, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, the full text of these items and the orders are on the website, longbeachny.gov/councilmeetings under the agendas page. And one last item, and this was emailed to all of you, since I could not give, again, could not give this to you in person. The city clerk has presented the letter of review from the office of the state controller within 10 days of filing the report. And I'll hand it back to you, President Bendo.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll start with our city manager update.
Okay, thank you very much. What we have going on and what we've been working on is trying to get the board open again. The staff and I have all been working, or say the team and I, all been working on making sure that we get it open and we get it open properly and with social distancing. So the public will be glad to hear that the boardwalk should be open on Thursday, Thursday morning at dawn. We also have been working on getting the beach open. The beaches will, or the beach will be open on Saturday for Memorial Day weekend. The beach will be open on weekends only up until about June 28th. And after June 28th, it will be open every day from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM until Labor Day. Effective tomorrow, beach passes, I signed an executive order and you all will be doing a resolution. We're covering ourselves both ways. Beach passes will only be available to residents of Long Beach. This is effective as tomorrow. Beach passes were sold the last, since Monday, Monday, Tuesday. And if there were non-residents that purchased these passes, we will honor those beach passes. However, beginning Monday, you have to have your ID and beach passes will only be for residents. Daily beach passes that will be sold on Saturday will be for residents only. Starting next Tuesday, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, seniors and people with disabilities will be able to buy their passes on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. I think that's all I have for right now. We've been working on the errata sheet of changes that we have and we will have our working session on Thursday. Mr. McNally will go over the guidelines of the beach and the boardwalk and also the guidelines will be posted on the website by late tonight.
Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, before I get into this, I just want to extend an offer of thanks to all of the city staff. We've been working basically since the virus hit and we had to close down the boardwalk to figure out a plan of how to reopen it. Obviously, nobody has been through a time like this. But thanks to the expertise of all of the staff from beach park maintenance, the lifeguards, our police force, this was a real team effort. We've been gaming out for the last several weeks how we're going to reopen a boardwalk and how we're going to reopen a beach in a manner that is safe during a pandemic like this, as we're hopefully starting to come out of it. That puts the safety of our residents first, while at the same time allowing everybody to get back to some sense of normalcy. And this was a little bit of a guessing game as to what the state regulations or federal regulations were that we were going to have to adhere to. And I am pleased to announce that the guidelines that we had drawn up and that we're planning to get operational pretty much mirrored exactly what the state has proffered. So because of that and because of all the good work of the staff and the years of experience and institutional knowledge that our staff has, we are able to get a beach up and operational in just one week's time, because we really anticipated everything that was going to be coming down the pike. So thank you to all of them. What I will go through now is the general user guidelines for both our boardwalk and our beach. I will note that our lifeguards have specific protocols that they're going to be putting in play when they're doing rescues and coming in contact with the public. Same for our special police. They have all been thoroughly trained and are working with their own guidelines. So what I'm putting forth here is essentially what we are expecting of our residents and what will be enforced for both the boardwalk and the beach. It's going to take a couple of minutes, but I think this is a high interest level, so time well spent. So for the boardwalk, as the city manager noted, it's going to be open from, it's going to be open daily from dusk until dawn. We anticipate that happening by Thursday. Masks must be worn on the boardwalk when social distancing of six feet is not possible. Signs are going to be placed all throughout the boardwalk and the beach, reminding people to wear masks and maintain social distancing. Have your mask with you at all times. Essentially, if you are leaving your house, you normally grab your wallet, your keys. Make sure you have your mask with you because you do not know when you are not going to be able to social distancing. Bike use on the boardwalk is going to be limited and access is only going to be allowed from sunrise until 10:00 AM daily in order to accommodate social distancing throughout the most highly trafficked portions of the day. When walking, we're asking folks to please use the southern side to travel east and the northern side to travel west. That also helps facilitate social distancing. No gathering or idling will be allowed on the boardwalk entrances or exits. Sideways placed on all ramps telling people not to stop on them as doing so makes social distancing impossible for those trying to enter or exit the boardwalk. The boardwalk will be open for active use only. No gatherings will be allowed. And every other boardwalk bench will be blocked off in order to discourage gatherings. We do want to allow folks to be able to sit with their family members or take a break. So we left every other bench open, but this is not meant as a place to hang out. Bathrooms will be open and maintained by beach maintenance. Signs will be placed at each noting that admittance is limited to two individuals at a time and that social distancing must be maintained while online. Beach maintenance is hiring our additional staff to ensure sufficient cleaning and stocking of facilities. Spacing lines will be established at the entrance of each facility. And the boardwalk will be continually patrolled by our special police force, reminding folks to maintain social distancing at all times. As for the beach, visitors to the beach that don't live together must maintain social distancing six feet again. No groups of more than 10 individuals will be allowed. Signs outlining these rules will be placed on each ticket booth and on the beach itself in high-traffic areas. Possessions of a mask or facial covering will be required as visitors cannot predict whether or not they will be put in a situation where they are unable to maintain social distance. I would ask our residents to just assume that you're going to need to have your mask when entering or exiting the boardwalk on ramps. Once you get to your spot on the beach where you're with your family, where you can social distance from other, you can take the mask off. No group sports are going to be allowed. Volleyball and other such games involve shared items and/or could result in non-adherence to social distancing and as such will not be allowed. Special police and uniformed officers will be patrolling the beach to enforce guidelines. Lifeguards will remind visitors of guidelines when necessary to deter adherence. Lifeguards and the Long Beach Police Department will be constantly monitoring capacity at each beach. If and as individual beaches approach capacity where adherence to social distancing is getting difficult, that's the 50%, access to said beach will be closed and Long Beach Police Department specials will direct visitors east or west accordingly. Beach showers are going to remain off until further notice. And as per usual, when no lifeguards are on duty until the beach officially opens and even thereafter, no swimming is allowed when no lifeguards are on duty. So both the Magnolia, gazebo and trailer at Broadland Laurelton will be open from 9:00 to 4:00 on weekends and 9:00 to 6:00 during the week for residential season and daily passes. As a reminder, daily passes are only sold when the beach is open. Social distancing guidelines will be enforced there as well and masks are required when making purchases. And the city manager noted that on Tuesdays and Thursdays starting next week, the gazebo will be open to sell passes from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM for only seniors 62 and older and for people with disabilities. So at that, that's our general guidance. The one caveat I would say, or the one issue is the governor has made it very clear that if we are unable to enforce the 50% rule, that he will have no exception or have no problem with shutting beaches down. So we're putting forward rules and going to try and enforce them, but it's really going to be up to the public to help us keep these beaches open. So we appreciate all cooperation.
Okay, thank you. So I guess rather than the north, south, east, west, just everybody stay to the right when they're walking on the boardwalk, like they would driving in a car. Stay on the right side. You know, the other thing is the specials, the summer specials will be starting this weekend. So we're going to get the police some help with enforcement issues. But the simple fact is with a more than two-mile-long boardwalk, the beach and everything, it's just, there's not going to be enforcement people everywhere at once. So it just comes down to, we're counting on people to do the right thing. We get it, people have been cooped up, a little punch happy, they want to get out and we did everything we could to make that happen for this weekend coming up. So, you know, get out and enjoy yourself, but like I said, if you heard the robo-call, if you want to put yourself at risk, that's on you. You can do that, but you cannot put others at risk. You do not have the right to do that. So we're going to be instructing folks, the enforcement people, to be diligent about that. So we're asking for your cooperation, please, because what we don't want is the governor coming back in and saying, "Long Beach hasn't been doing it right," and just shutting us down. And then we lose the summer altogether and none of us want that. So please, bring your mask with you. It's not that big a deal. Just wear it going up and down the ramps. You're going to be interacting with a ticket taker. You're going to be walking past people on the ramps. Just please put the mask on for that short period of time. Just one other thing I want to mention. I want to commend the staff. Some of you may have heard, the MLK Center had been shut down. The fire alarm in the MLK Center had failed and it's, we found out it's a pretty old system. But the fire marshal, the county fire marshal came down, inspected the place and said, "Nope, you got to shut the building," which he ordered it closed, which we did. And the building couldn't be reopened until the violations were cleared. There was the fire alarm. And trying to find parts for an old fire alarm system was not easy considering everyone being shut down. But I just want to say the staff really jumped through a lot of hoops to get that building open really fast considering the limitations they were operating under. We had also found out why the fire marshal had closed it, that the permit that the MLK Inc. had to serve food had also expired back in December. So we gave them an assist as well with the Department of Health at the county, allowing them to get that renewed so they could continue to do the work they're doing, feeding somebody, people that need help in the city. So it was a pretty monumental effort to get the building back open, but I know there was a lot of strange conspiracy theories going around on social media. But yeah, it was basically just the fire alarm system failed, which the law, fire marshal required the building to be closed. And a lot of people put in a lot of hours to get that building back open pretty quickly. So I just want to, I want to commend the staff for all that work that they did to make that happen. So we can continue meeting the needs of our needy residents in need. So with that, I guess we will move on to the agenda.
A quick question, just to follow up from Mr. McNally's points, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just because people have been asking, any resolve regarding issue of concessions on the boardwalk and other such services?
Yes, our kiosks will be able to operate on the boardwalk. They need to be grab-and-go only. And as with all other establishments in town that are deemed essential services, they need to establish and police their own protocols to make sure that both they and themselves and their clients are inclusive.
All right, so that's good news. So the concession stands will be open as well. So almost, almost getting back to normal. So with that, we'll move on to the agenda.
Okay, first items, a public hearing for the purposes of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the capital improvement program for the five-year period from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2025. I have Mr. Morando on. I'm going to unmute you, Mr. Morando. John, you're unmuted.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I hope everybody is doing well. A long time no see. It's nice to see all your faces. Dave, I just need the presentation brought up.
I'm bringing it up now. Just give me one second here.
Everybody can hear me okay? Okay, I thought it was important to reiterate the same quote I put up last year. One of the most important things in a city is our infrastructure. Other than its people, it is definitely the most valuable asset we have. I think that's important to keep in mind that if we don't maintain the infrastructure system, we will have issues. Dave, you're going kind of, okay, next slide.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Just to reiterate too, capital improvements generally are paid over a period of their useful life. So the taxpayers who benefit from the project during its useful life support that asset through their property taxes. Example I used last year and I'll use again this year, if a new water tank can be financed over 40 years, if a property owner who hasn't been there for 17 years sold the property to a new owner, the original property owner would have paid for 17 years of that benefit and the new owner would draw the next 23 years of that benefit the tank has provided. Next slide. As of 5/15/2020, the city's outstanding principal for capital and other long-term debt totals $72,058,000. 42.1% of the current amount outstanding will be paid off in the next four years. 84.2% will be paid off in the next nine years. The city's percentage of debt contracting power is approximately 25% exhausted. That means at 25% and $72 million, we actually could bond, not that we would suggest doing that, up to $300 million. The total to be paid on long-term debt with interest is $84,489,242. And that's a little approximate because in speaking with Ina Resnick, bond rates are a little in flux. So that number could change up or down a little bit depending on the interest rates. New bonding will have to be added in the next fiscal year to convert $44 million of outstanding short-term bond anticipation notes, Series 2020A worth $41,645,000 and Series 2020B, $2,441 to long-term bonds. Next slide. In this year's five-year plan, we tried to reduce by reprioritizing necessary projects beyond 2025, as we did last year, beyond 2024. Use remaining funds from previous projects, which would be completed under budget to reduce funds needed for new projects. And these are generally ongoing-type projects, road overlays, water main construction, sewer main construction. And this year, there was a change in the parameters of what goes into the capital budget. Previously, under previous administration, we would budget something that lasted five years and was over $5,000. The new level we're using is $250,000. So we'll need departments to look at things. As an example, last year, for this upcoming budget, we leased our garbage trucks. We now have six new garbage trucks in that are leased. There'll be a steady cost in the operating budget in seven years at the end of their useful life. When their maintenance costs start to increase, those will be replaced with a new lease on new trucks. And that should save in the operating costs in terms of vehicle maintenance on sanitation trucks. That's just one example. Next, please. So this year, the capital highlights are, in the general fund is probably the smallest budget that I've seen since I've been here, $2.2 million of city-funded projects, grants and bonds required, $35.9 million. These are grants that we have mostly with FEMA. The big one in that of course is the $32 million Critical Infrastructure Bulkhead. And grants where we do not need a bond, and I'm sorry, that came off the screen, $19 million. And those are the GOSR projects that we're working on, the North Shore Bulkhead, which is in progress now, and the drainage project. In the sewer fund, we budgeted $1.2 million. And in grants, we have $12.5 million in grants that go towards the consolidation of the sewer plant for the building of the pipeline from our plant over to Bay Park. The water fund, we budgeted, we, city-funded would be $1.7 million and we still have $600,000 in grants that we do not have to bond for for lead service replacement. Next slide, please. Again, as I did last year, there was much more significant decrease in the five-year plan going forward. I tried to do the same thing again this year. In the general fund for the five years, we reduced it from $33,962 down to $30,888,000, which is less $3 million than last year's five-year plan. In sewer, we reduced it from $4,705,000 to $2,845,000, which is $1,860,000 less than the year before. And actually, if all continues to go as well as it is with the planning for the consolidation of the sewer plant, in year 2024 will be the last year we have any expenditures, capital expenditures on the sewer plant. Water from 2019 to '23 was $19,720,000. This year was reduced to $11 million. That's less $8,720,000. A big portion of that is because the water tank was already authorized. Grants increased from $53,923,000 to $63,451,000 to plus $10,428,000. That's a little misleading. The reason for the big jump in the grants is the bidding for the Critical Infrastructure Bulkhead came in, $10 million over the estimate. And we're in the process of getting that $10 million approved by FEMA and DISH's, New York State Department of Homeland Security. So that's really the reason for that. That would not have been as big a jump in grants. Next slide, please. This is just kind of a capital plan breakdown, generally what goes into the general fund, road and drainage, shoreline projects, transportation projects, public safety, grounds, parks, technology and equipment. The sewer fund, of course, we have the collection system and the water pollution control plant and various equipment. And in the water fund, very similar, we have distribution system improvements, treatment plant improvements and equipment. Next slide, please. These are the projects and have broken them into, these are projects that have new funds and some have existing funds. Some have grant funds, some need bonding and some need no bonding. So the first project on this list is city hall facade rehabilitation, which is a $750,000 project, which will take a bond. And that's to stop all the leaks coming into the building and replace all the lintels over the windows. If we don't finish the envelope of the building, the building is going to continue to deteriorate. Roadway reconstruction, this is for major roadway projects where we do the water mains, sewer mains, curb, sidewalk, street lighting. We added additional, we're asking for an additional $520,000. We still have existing funds from previous projects of $289,000. This amount, $520,000 would have to be bonded. The bus parking garage rehabilitation, that's going to be over $1 million to repair. We asked for an additional $500,000 and we have existing funds of $650,800, would require bonding another $500,000. Sewer collection system upgrades, we've asked for $500,000. We have $144,000 in existing funds to the left. And these are for, these go on to the roadway reconstruction projects for the portion that replaces the sewer main. Building repairs in the water pollution control plant, we asked for $320,000 additional on top of $430,000. And we'll require to bond that $320,000. This major project is on our two digesters. The primary digester roof collapsed. So we're only working on one digester and we are required to repair the other roof. We've gone with the cheapest type cover we can go because it's only going to be needed for the next two to three years. And the engineering is on the way for that already. Sewer system compliance upgrades, this is mostly for engineering and study, $250,000. We're asking for additional funds on top of $65,000 we have. And the reason for this is with the consolidation, we're going to have to develop a decommissioning plan for the rest of the wastewater plant. When the wastewater plant shuts down and the flow is diverted to Bay Park, we are going to need to have a plan to remove all the settling tanks, all the grid chambers, the decoronation facilities, the sand filter and all the other treatment trains that are down there to bring that property into usable-type property. And that's going to be a requirement from the DEC. Water distribution system upgrades, we're asking for $800,000. We have $788,000 for existing funds. Again, these are for water main improvements, including adding new water main grid around the walks area, where we will then run services into the walks and eliminate the old four-inch mains that run through the backyards of those homes. That'll be the first step in an overall improvement project for the walks because eventually we'll need to redo the sewers there also. Hydrant and water service replacement, this is work that's done by our in-house people. We're asking for $200,000 on top of $135,000 that we still have in the budget. And we'll be asking to bond another $200,000. And this is for the replacing hydrants and services that our own crews do. And then their time is capitalized on those projects. We're asking for $200,000 additional for the Park Place Water Treatment Plant cover, to cover the separation tanks. As you know, for quite some time, the settling tanks where they remove the iron have been open-air basins. They're really required to be covered and this is going to be about $1 million. We already had $800,000 authorized and bonded, so we'll need another $200,000 in bond. This past year, it's been determined that we can no longer use well 16. The well casing has collapsed from age, dwellers over 40 years old, which is pretty long life for a well. So we need to start a design of a new well of '19 so that we have enough capacity to meet fire demand and max day demand. So we would be bonding $150,000 there. Park Avenue Resiliency Project, we're asking for additional $250,000. We have grant funds of $1,250,000 and we will be required to bond $1,500,000 on this project, which will be our share of the match. Fire department ambulance, $200,000 to replace the ambulance. This we will get through the capital assistance grant that we're getting from Senator Kaminsky. We will have to bond it and then reimburse it, so that'd be a short ban and then will be paid off as soon as we get the grant from capital assistance. Road overlays, we're asking for $400,000, $200,000 of which are grant funds and we'll have to. grant funds and two-hundred, and we'll have to bond four-hundred thousand. This is through the CHIPS program, through the Capital Highway Improvement Program of the state. In previous, up until last year, we would do roadwork put in for the reimbursement to the DOT, and that money would come in as a revenue source. Last year, what we did was we only put two-hundred thousand of it into a revenue source, and we used two-hundred thousand of it to cover the actual cost of the overlay, so that we would not have to bond the entire thing. So this would be the same way. We would bond the four-hundred thousand, but once the money was received, that ban could be paid off. Time and attendance software is a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. This is a very important project, and this hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars is going to come from the Financial Restructuring Board, and we do not need to bond for that. Pool liner for the Recreation Department, the pool needs a new liner. We estimate that at a hundred thousand dollars, and that'll be a grant of a hundred thousand dollars from Community Block Development Grant, so there'll be no bonding required on that either. Next slide, please. Fire department replacement of personal protective equipment. This is their, the fire department's bunker gear. It's new funds, a hundred thousand dollars. NFPA requires that over a ten-year period, all bunker gear must be replaced, no matter what condition it's in. And this we're doing with the Capital Assistance Grant for a hundred thousand dollars also from Senator Kaminsky's three-hundred-and-fifty thousand grant that he's got us. We will have to bond this and then pay the bond off. Heavy-duty trolley is, we're asking for six thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, the smallest item on the budget, and that's because we get grant funding for this of five-hundred-and-forty thousand from the Federal Transmission Administration, and we will have to bond the six thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Lifeguard ATV, we're asking for one, additional lifeguard, all-terrain vehicle for the beach use on the beach, of twenty-five thousand, and this will also be paid for through the Capital Assistance Grant from Senator Kaminsky, and we will need to bond that twenty-five thousand. So, as you can see, last year, this was four pages long of requests. This year, we're just a page and a third. So those are all the requests for new funds and what exists in existing funds and what we're getting in grants. Next slide, please. This is the overall view of the, we're asking for a total of two-point-two million in the general fund for capital improvements, two-point-eight million requested for sewer and water together, and the table below shows you the breakdown for the next five years. And as you can see, as I mentioned before, on the sewer fund, you can see the, and over the next two years after this year, we're at seven-hundred thousand, and 2324, we dropped to two-seventy-five. And in 2425, we will be zero, because we will no longer own the plant or the collection system. It'd be a huge saving to the residents. The water fund, you can see, we're at one-point-six for this year, two-point-nine in the year, and then two-point-eight, then one-point-eight, and one-point-eight. Next slide, please. I think that's it. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Okay, thank you. So, for the people watching, we're going to do this like we did with the city budget, since obviously we're not all together, where we normally have people being able to come up to the podium and ask questions. What you can do is, you can send any questions in to email them to info@longbeachny.gov. Again, that's info, I-N-F-O, at longbeachny.gov. All those questions will be posted online with the answers written, you know, in written form, so everyone can see the questions and the answers both. So with that, I guess we can move on to the next public hearing.
Our second public hearing is for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Okay, so basically, the same story as just this one. Again, people have been sending questions in. I believe the questions from the last hearing are up online now. I believe a few of the questions are still being, had to be sent out to people in various departments for more detailed answers, but I think it's been indicated that those answers will be forthcoming shortly. The questions that were asked last round are up on the website, and any questions we get, again, related to this one, any comments, will again be answered in writing and put up on the website for everyone to see. And of course, any input we get is going to be considered for an errata sheet, if we do an errata sheet to make edits to the budget. With that, I guess we could move on to the...
Bendo, can I just ask Mr. Morando a quick couple of questions?
Okay.
John?
Yes, yes.
Just regarding the last two, one of the last two items, the heavy trolley and the lifeguard ATV, is that, when you say lifeguard ATV, is that a fully-loaded, ready-to-go rescue truck, or is it a four-by-four?
It's a four-by-four quad with a rescue, you know, trailer on it and things of that nature, that they use to, you know, if they have to transport somebody up to the board walking out.
And the heavy trolley?
The heavy trolley is mostly being paid for to replace one of the old trolleys that hasn't worked in some time, I think since Sandy almost, so.
Okay, so is that a closed, one of the closed trolley?
That would be a closed trolley, yes.
Thank you.
I want to read the names of the people that have sent in questions, the latest names, so that they know I received them. Warren Foreman, Dana S., Lisa Santinos, Chris P., Robert Donovan, or it could be Robin, I wasn't, they weren't sure, Roy Lester and Philip. We received your questions. Actually, your questions will be sent back to you by the end of the day on Thursday and posted on the website. And again, if anyone has questions about the capital plan, please send those as well, then we can answer questions. And as Mr. Morando stated, the capital plan has been changed from previous years. A capital plan is based on objects that need to be purchased for the city that will have a lifetime that cannot be purchased in operating. However, as you can see, and I noticed the last two items, one, we needed to bond six thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty and twenty-five thousand, so everybody knows that those items will go back into the operating budget, because they are not considered an amount that we need to bond money for. What we're trying to make sure is that whatever we bond for is going to be reasonable and can be paid back. And so, a capital plan is a plan that's done over several years, and I wanted to thank Mr. Morando, because a lot of things had to keep moving from year to year, and I want the public also to know that we will not spend money or bond money that we have no way of paying back, and we don't see how we're going to pay it back. And so, it's going to take a lot for our capital projects and our capital plan budget for the future. And of course, it has been cut down tremendously because of the threshold of what we can, of what should be spent under capital versus what should be spent under operating.
Mike Delory, I just have two questions for Mr. Morando. The bus parking garage rehabilitation, if he could just briefly describe what the plan is, and then also, the time and attendance software, if he could just basically summarize what that hundred-and-ninety thousand will accomplish.
Inspection done by Walker Engineering, two years ago there. The slabs are moving. We determined it's not a structural failure issue, but because they're moving, eventually they will cause, you know, further damage. So what's going to happen is all the pin joints and ball joints are going to be redone, and then the expansion joints are going to be redone between the slabs. So you won't get that rocking in the slab, and it'll, over a period of time, it'll protect the garage. Plus, there'll be a new fire suppression system. The standpipe system in that garage is pretty well shot, so we have a car fire in there. Makes it very difficult for the fire department to operate, and some painting of some of the spall concrete and things of that nature.
Okay.
And that's based on an engineering part. I can't really comment too much on the time and attendance software. This is a project that Dave Fraser and Ena Resnick are working on. They may want to explain what their plan is with that.
Okay, thank you. I could touch base with them.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I know what it's, it's there to do time and attendance, because we do everything by hand now, so it should streamline everything, but Dave will have a better idea how it works.
Yeah, everything right now is done on paper time sheets, and this is basically to move into electronic timekeeping is basically what this project is doing.
Okay, thank you.
And this project is going to be funded by the Financial Restructuring Board? The time and attendance?
Correct, that's my understanding.
Yes.
And I just want to reiterate something the city manager said is, there was a shift this year in the way the capital plan was being done. Around 2012, the city started taking things out of the operating budget and putting them into the capital plan budget, which was borrowed for. Quite frankly, it was probably to make an unworkable budget workable, because they were then borrowing for things that really should have been in the normal operating budget. Any of you that maybe have to do budgeting as part of your job, you know, there are, you kind of know the normal consumables and things that go into an operating budget versus a longer-term capital budget. We're now moving towards putting the things back in the operating budget that should be in the operating budget and budgeting for them annually, so we don't keep borrowing each year. With the goal, of course, you know, we're trying to get the borrowing down, because every year, our debt service keeps going up, and the more we got to pay towards debt service, the less money we have to spend on other services and road repairs and paving and other such things. So this is another step, like I said, at the last meeting, when we were talking about the budget, that addressing the systemic issues on how the city conducts its business, and this is one of those steps, is to start doing the budgeting the way it should be done, where things that should be part of the operating budget go back into the operating budget like they're supposed to be. So with that, I guess we can move on to the agenda items.
Okay. Item one is a resolution authorizing the continued retention of Capital Markets Advisors LLC, CMA.
Okay, I don't know if the city manager wants us to speak on this, or...
Yes, this is, CMA has been working with the city, I know, for the last year, and the Financial Restructuring Board, Restructuring Board has suggested that they continue with us, and the cost will be covered by them. And it's important to know that over the last twelve months, the cost was twelve thousand dollars a year, and I believe now it's ten thousand, it's ten thou, I mean, twelve thousand a month. I wish it was twelve thousand a year. For all the CMA people on the phone, did you hear what I just said? So it was, it's, used to be twelve thousand a month, and now it is ten thousand a month. They have been very diligent in working with me and working with the Comptroller. They will be assisting in the multi-year plan. I have on my desk the fiscal conditions analysis that they did, it's a very thorough report that will be up and ready for the public to review in the next few weeks. And so, this is authorizing them another one-year contract.
Okay, thank you. And it's worth reiterating again that the state Financial Restructuring Board will be picking up the cost for CMA. And for those of you, just in case you don't know, CMA is our, is the city's financial advisor. So they're, they did an audit of departments, they're going to help the city with its long-term financial turnaround plan and things like that. So, and that is being paid through the State Financial Restructuring Board. Are there any questions from the council?
I just have one question, John. This is year two. I believe CMA was engaged a year ago, and now if it's grant-funded, and we're going to be going to year two?
Correct.
Thank you.
Guys, I also have Tom, he's on mute right now from CMA, if you need him to join the session.
If you have any questions, they're on, CMA is on, if you have any questions for them. If not...
I have you unmuted.
I have some comments, if that's all right. First off, this is related to CMA. I can say that I've met with CMA, and I do view them as an effective, long-term strategic partner to the city in helping us out of years of fiscal and operational mismanagement, and especially to comply with the many directives of the New York State Controller's Office. Second, I'm extremely grateful to the members of the New York State Financial Restructuring Board for funding this vitally important service. That said, I recently received copies of the two corrective action plan responses to the New York State Controller's December 2019 reports, audit reports. These plans were submitted by City Manager Gaden, Controller Resnick, and President Bendo. One addressed the city's financial condition, and the other addressed payments for unused leave accruals. The reports hold persons responsible for implementation for each of the audit recommendations. There were fifteen audit recommendations in total between the two reports. The city council is cited as partially responsible for thirteen of the fifteen recommendations. Therefore, at this particularly critical time, I believe language should be added to the contract that CMA is required to meet with or conduct calls with all of the council members, a minimum of once per quarter for the duration of the contract. This is in order to monitor the city's progress against the audit reports, recommendations, and other matters, as well as get feedback on the city manager's performance towards those goals, so that the council can take appropriate actions, if necessary, in a timely manner. I hope my fellow council members will add my recommendation to the resolution this evening, so that the entire council can serve the residents of Long Beach. Thank you.
Well, we're...
I would suggest that if you want to add that, then we pull it, and then we go back and have a conversation with CMA to talk about how things should be done in the future, or how you would like them to be done in the future, because that's a change to the contract. So if you want to add that language, I mean, I hear what Councilmember McKinnis is saying, however, that is something we do anyway. I don't know what has happened in the past, but that is something that is being done anyway, kept, any reports that we have gotten, anything...
I am, this is, this is a year-long contract. I don't know what the future holds, and I need to make, I want to make sure that the city council works more, works closely with CMA. Prior to your arrival, Ms. Gaden, I do not believe that CMA conducted, talked to the council members as much as they should have, and therefore, I don't think we got the full value of CMA's services prior to your arrival. By adding up something of this sort, we will, we will ensure that the Kent City Council members, each one of, each one of the five of us fulfill our responsibilities to the residents.
Just a point of, I would agree with City Manager Gaden, that if you're going to do that, then we probably should pull it, because that will require, might require some renegotiation with respect to what was agreed upon, so I would just echo that.
All right, then, I'll make a motion to table this resolution.
Motion to table item number one. Councilmember Delory.
Yeah, I do. I think we just have a little bit more clarity, so I vote to table.
It's Member Mandell. Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item one's been tabled. On to item two. Item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager and the city controller to transfer funds within the 2019-20 budget.
Okay, so...
Um, I'm here, I'm sorry. What that means is that, um, we have a budget, we have a bottom line of a budget, and on occasions, um, some expenses have to be paid, like, for example, we had to have fire truck, um, to be fixed, and there was money in a different line item, and we needed to move the money that was excess from that line item to, to have the, um, fire truck repaired. And so, what we, what typically happens at the end of the year, you take excess money from lo-, one line item to, to another line item, but the bottom line of the budget does not change. Um, and so, uh, it was told to me that the council never saw what the changes were, and in this one, we will show you what the changes are. Um, right now, what it says is that, um, in the charter, that we have to come and have, uh, come before the council for $1,500, and we're almost at the end of the fiscal year. And so we're just moving money to where we know, where we know we need things fixed, but the bottom line of the budget doesn't, doesn't change.
Uh, any questions from the council?
Um, I just have, um, one comment. Um, resolved that the city council shall be furnished with a report of all transfers, transfers made, um, by July 31st. Can this date be earlier?
The fiscal year doesn't end till June 30th, and we take in invoices for the June 30th fiscal year end. We're still getting them in, in July.
Okay, understood. So, the council will be furnished a full report by July 31st?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I just want to add, any, anybody that pays attention to the council meetings knows, uh, the last, my, the last two years, I voted no on this item, because, um, the council was never given any information on where money was being moved. Um, so when I heard that this was going back on to the agenda, um, I, I spoke with the city manager about that, that concern, because during the audit, um, this year, we found out that some large sums of money had been moved around with nobody knowing about it. Um, and that was a problem. That was, that's something that was flagged. So, um, so this, this is a, a way to make sure that people are aware of what's being moved. Uh, we'll now get a report on the money that's being transferred, which never happened before. So, uh, any other questions from the council?
Okay, item three is a resolution to schedule a special meeting of the city council for Tuesday, May 26, 2020.
Okay, this is to schedule a special meeting so we can vote on the budget. The budget has to be approved by, um, the end of May, uh, or it goes into effect automatically. So this is a special meeting to, um, to vote on the budget and, uh, and a RADA sheet, if necessary. Any questions from the council? Okay, next item.
Item four is added by unanimous consent. Item four is a resolution affirming the city manager's local emergency orders regarding limitation of beach access and modified boardwalk opening.
Okay, so what, uh, city manager, you want to talk about this, or you want me to talk about it?
Oh, was that, what'd you say? I'm sorry. Me?
Do you want me to talk about it, or are you gonna talk?
You can talk about it. You go ahead.
So, wha-, what this is, is anybody that's been watching the news knows that, uh, New York City has decided not to open their beaches. Um, that, of course, uh, created a bit of a problem, because, uh, originally, everybody was talking nice about, uh, regional cooperation, and we saw that lasted probably for one phone call before everybody started going off and doing their own thing. So, New York City, uh, which includes the Rockaways, which are pretty much right next to us, uh, will not be open. Um, as a result, both, uh, and Suffolk Counties have announced their intention to move ahead with making their beaches, um, residence-only, uh, to keep from getting inundated with, uh, from, not from the local area overwhelming the beaches, just fully consider, considering that, um, we're limited to 50% capacity, um, by the governor's order. So, what this is doing is this'll make our beaches... Who's ever got their mic open? Can they mute it, please?
I think it's Mike.
Okay, um, thank you. But what, so what this is doing is this resolution, uh, and the, uh, order that the city manager signed today, this is affirming the order, will make, uh, Long Beach beaches for the meantime, uh, resident-only beaches. So, uh, because with the, Nassau County making the beaches resident-only, and New York City closed, we were about the only place left to go. Well, Jones Beach, I guess, too, but Jones Beach has the ability to just lock the gates on the parking lots to control capacity. We don't have that luxury, so that made us, uh, very vulnerable to severe overcrowding. So, this is, uh, intended to deal with that by making our beaches resident-only for the time being. So, and this is all up on the, uh, on the city website where the city council agenda's posted, if you want to see it. So, uh, with that, are there any questions from the council? Okay, hearing none?
Okay, our last item, another item added by unanimous consent, is a resolution affirming the swearing-in and appointment of a new class of special patrolmen and authorizing the city manager to appoint additional special patrolmen pursuant to section 53 of the charter.
Okay, so what this is, uh, related to is, we're basically adding our police force some help for enforcement. Um, we know with the social distancing guidelines, the New York pause that's still in place, um, we, we've all seen, you know, some of the stuff that's going on in the West End and on the beaches, and, um, as the weather gets nicer and more and more people come out, um, it's, um, it's gonna make enforcement that much more imperative. So, what this is doing is, uh, basically deputizing some people to, uh, help with, uh, enforcement. So, um, any questions from the council?
Okay, on to the voting. Item one has been tabled. Item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager and the city controller to transfer funds within the 2019-20 budget. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution to schedule a special meeting of the city council for Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston. Thank you. Uh, Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution affirming the city manager's local emergency orders regarding limitation of beach access and modified boardwalk opening. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Finally, item five is a resolution affirming the swearing-in and appointment of a new class of special patrolmen and authorizing the city manager to appoint additional special patrolmen pursuant to section 53 of the charter. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
That was Scott.
Oh, sorry, didn't get, didn't get you, Scott. Little second?
I will hope.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, city manager's, um, personnel report has been posted by the city clerk. We'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes, and thank you for this great meeting.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis, oops, sorry.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, uh, I guess we got some good and well fair questions. Uh, let's see what we got here. Um, first one is from Michael Kennedy. Um, he's asking about if the boardwalk will remain closed for Memorial Day. Um, okay, well, nope, it'll be open, so I guess it kind of makes the, the que-, the question was about what happens if it stays closed, but, uh, obviously the boardwalk will be open, so, um, we all get our boards back. Uh, the next is from Michelle Knox, um, asking about the restaurants and bars, the curbside food pickup and cocktails to go. Um, she's asking if the city's required the establishment to submit a detailed safety plan that includes posting social distance markers, limiting person gatherings, um, according to the New York State guidelines posted in the New York Forward Business Reopening Safety Plan templates. That's a mouthful. Um, so, basically, uh, we're following the guidance issued by the state a- as of this time, there, uh, the individual establishments are not required to submit plans for approval. Um, so, right now, they don't have to do that. If that changes, uh, then, then, you know, we would have to make them comply, but as of now, they don't have to. Uh, the next question is from Lisa Santinos. Um, is there an update on hiring Charlie Rubin at the police commissioner? Um, I've read online, it's predetermined you're hiring him. I just want to know what's real and what isn't. Um, I, I, Lisa, I don't know where you're getting your news from, but, um, I'm gonna say the same thing I said last time. I don't know about the other, I don't even know who Charlie Rubin is, but, um, we haven't started the search yet for the, the police commissioner. That should be starting very soon, though. Um, so, no, um, no, that's not the case, so, I'm, like I said, I'm not sure where you're getting your news, but you might want to look for a new source. Uh, oh, she's got another question here. Uh, I've been hearing that certain people who were terminated are being brought back in the budget under other departments. I'm hearing of individuals being brought to Public Works but being stationed in the wreck as an end around. Just want to make sure that wasn't going to happen. Um, nope. Uh, the, I, I believe a few of the, uh, part-timers that were laid off, uh, were given the opportunity to come back to do some beach work, um, but that, that's it. No, the, otherwise, no. Um, Dave Zellinger, uh, he's asking about restrictions on the beach and boardwalk and food service locations due to the governor's order. So, kind of, that's a, a moot point right now. Like I said, we got, um, the concession stands will be open, the boardwalk will be open, and the, and the beach will be open to residents. Uh, Kim Musman, hi, Kim, uh, one of my neighbors. Uh, she's asking about, let's see here, let me filter through this, it's kind of a little bit lengthy. Okay, she's, so she's asking about all the crowds on, uh, Beach Street in the West End. Um, a lot of people aren't wearing masks, they're not six feet apart. We, I mean, we've all seen the pictures, and she's saying, you know, when she's trying to walk with her, with her ch-, uh, her child on the, on the sidewalk, and there's people standing out there, um, especially not wearing masks. And she's also asking about some of the younger folks, I guess, are starting to have parties in their homes. Um, oh, okay, so here, she's asking if we could create a task force of citizens to build a comprehensive plan to keep our city safe during the crisis, and to instruct the police to give out more citations, and proactively enforce the, uh, pause and SLA rules. Um, okay, well, um, you know, the, the, we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce about the issue with the, uh, the restaurants, bars in the West End, and , uh, the chamber, again, uh, yesterday or the day before, sent a representative out again to talk to the, uh, to the restaurant owners about, uh, their responsibilities, about, uh, maintaining social distancing and the crowds and such. So, um, we're gonna have to basically kind of keep putting the screws to them. Um, you know, they've basically been put on notice, they have to, uh, meet the, the state guidelines. The police have been giving out, uh, the vi-, violations, um, and that's gonna continue and may need to increase in the, in the days ahead. Um, like I said, we, we also have the specials starting this weekend, as well as the, uh, the additional people that'll be, uh, deputized. So, uh, we're gonna have a lot more bodies out there, uh, being able to do enforcement. Uh, as far as the, uh, the potential for a, a task force, um, yeah, we can, we can discuss that, and, uh, if, uh, it looks like things aren't getting resolved, uh, that, that could be a workable solution. So we, uh, we'll have to talk about that if, uh, we don't see some improvement. Next is from Laura Clarity, um, okay, same thing about, uh, the social distancing on sidewalks when people are heading to the beach and the beach pass lines. Um, and she's also asking about marking off spots in the large dirt lot. Um, she's on Edwards, so that, that would be the, the foundation block, okay, um, because a lot of cars park in there. Um, so the issue with that one there is with the found, uh, we don't own the foundation block. The foundation block is actually owned by, um, a, a private foundation. It's a family foundation. So, it's, it's, it's their lot. It's really not ours. So, uh, if they choose to let people park in there, um, it's, it's really their call. I mean, we, I guess we could talk to them, but it, it's, it's not the city's lot. Um, as far as the, uh, the social distancing issues, like I said, we're gonna have, um, more enforcement. Um, you know, the simple fact is, when you're going up and down the beach ramps, uh, y- you're not gonna be able to social distance, so there's an expectation people will, will have their masks and be wearing them with them in those situations. Uh, the next question is from Ian Freeman. Um, can a civic leader also be a political party leader? Um, well, that's, neither one of them are affiliated, related to the city, so I'm not sure how to answer that. Civic, I assume that means, when you say civic, I assume you mean a civic association. Um, so that's not a city issue, but if it is, we'll, we'll check with the corporation council. And then, can a council member run or be part of a local social media page? Uh, okay, I don't know the answer for that, but we will check with our corporation council and get you an answer, and, uh, get back to you with that. Next is from Sean Boyle. Will there be a limit on resident beach passes sold this year? Um, right now, there is no plan to limit the number of resident beach passes sold. As, as you just learned tonight, um, we're not gonna be selling beach passes to non-residents, so, um, and then, if a beach does appear to be hitting that 50% capacity, um, the, people will be asked, as they're coming on to a beach, to move to one beach east or west, you know, where the crowds, uh, may not be... where the crowds may not be as, as, as high. Next, we got Scott Richard. Let's see, Long Beach beaches are packed during the regular season, with many unemployed people, and the New York City beaches close, are beaches going to be more packed than ever? How do you plan on controlling capacity, social distancing, and controlling the surge of non-residents? Oh, well, again, you got that answer, we're making, we made our beach resident-only, and... Okay, yep, and that's it. The, the other question was, again, about non-residents coming to the beach, so that's not an, not an issue. Moisha Brooks, asking, do we support Engel Berman's pilot, and do we support the Long Beach Medical Center reopening? We don't know what Engel Berman's asking for, nothing's been submitted to the city yet. Last we heard, they're in negotiations with the NASA IDA, so we've gotten no details of any kind yet, so as soon as we get a formal presentation with the details, we'll, that'll be the time, I guess, when we'll make a, an assessment of what they're asking for. Otherwise, it's just, anything at this point would just be speculation. As far as the Long Beach Medical Center, if you were paying attention, we actually sent a letter to the state requesting that the, the Long Beach Medical Center be reopened when, early in the COVID-19 situation, especially when they were going around trying to set up these temporary hospitals and such, you know, we kind of sent the letter saying, why are you setting up a tempor, these temporary hospitals when we have a ready-made building waiting for you right here? So, next, Sean Boyle, will there be a limit on resident beach passes? Again, nope, not on resident beach passes, non-residents won't be able to buy passes. Neil Silverstein, can we, can you provide us with an update on the building and completion of the bathhouse under construction on Neptune? I assume that means the new bathroom that's going up on Neptune, that should be in place in about two to three weeks, so get near the finish line on that. From John Weider, is there a plan for admitting people to the beach when it opens on Memorial Day? What measures will be put in place to prevent the inevitable overcrowding that will occur in the fact that New York City beaches are closed? Same thing, again, by not selling beach passes to non-residents, it'll just be the residents we have to, we have to worry about, and that's, that'll be much more manageable. Next is from Brendan Healy. Over the past several weeks, there's been some complaints from residents around the increase in public drinking and open containers in the West End. Primary concern is the lack of social distancing, litter, and loitering outside of bars and restaurants. What's the city's plan for proactive enforcement of the ordinance and the state liquor authority rules as we enter the Memorial Day weekend? So, again, we've been working with the Chamber, the Chamber, again, sent people around, like I said, in the last couple of days, to go talk to them again. We're going to have more manpower for enforcement starting this weekend. So, that's, that's the plan, we're going to, we're going to have to, we're going to be more diligent. Robin Donovan. It's, Robin sent a kind of a bullet list, which is what hours, what masks, distancing, surf, oh, okay, it's all stuff about the beach, so it's just a bunch of bullet list-type questions. So, again, all the, this is all stuff that's already been addressed. The beach hours, I guess we didn't mention those earlier, they'll be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The surfing beaches, they will still be in effect, they're listed on the city's website. She asked about the beach, it's schooled and surf. The staff is going to be talking with them to see what their plans are, to make sure there's coordination. What else do we have? She's asking about, looks like, oh, about capacity. Same thing, again, you know, it's going to be basically a judgment call with the lifeguards and, and the police. It's not going to be an exact science, but they'll be estimating when they think they hit 50%, and then we'll start asking people to move east or west accordingly. She asked about the specials, if they've been giving training. Yep, they actually received their training on Saturday, an all-day training session about all the rules and the particulars for this year, since things are going to be a little different, so, so they're, they're ready to go and start this weekend. What do we have here? Robert Saminsky. The New York Comptroller's Office reported December 19 indicated there's clear basis, and in fact, in law, that the city, for the city of Long Beach to civilly seek repayment of improper payments by the city to retired and separated employees. Has the city sent a written demand to past employees who were overpaid, informing of the overpayment, requesting the money be paid back? And does the council manager know the statute of limitations within which time a civil's lawsuit must be instituted? So, the answer is yes, and as we, we discussed this summit at the last meeting, somebody asked about this at the last Good and Welfare, we have a, an outside law firm that has been doing an investigation and, and working on this. They are, we anticipate some action relatively soon, but it would be inappropriate to say anything more than that at this point, but yes, there has been, there has been work going on in this area, and there will be stuff going forward. Oh, Robin Donovan, again. In council meeting, a motion had been tabled to require all groups wishing to run festivals or celebrations to pay a reasonable fee to Long Beach for use of public spaces. A problem arose regarding the LBGT parades failure to pay their agreed amount, even though they agreed to cover certain expenses. In light of the financial difficulties Long Beach is having, a resolution should be passed resolving the issue for all future celebrations and activities. Has this been done, and if not, why not? Okay. So, no, it wasn't done yet, it was, it was not done, it was tabled previously. It has been discussed, it's been brought up again and discussed, and we anticipate it's going to be, come up in this upcoming fiscal year, that it'll be readdressed again. Mindy Dubberg, oh, hi, Mindy. During the past five summers, Beach Yoga LBNY has held classes and healing circles on the beach all summer. It stated on the city website, no group activities on the beach. What's the definition of a group activity? That's a good question. The yoga and its instructors are prepared to make certain all who attend are spaced out appropriately, six feet. So, I guess she wants, okay, wants to know what to... So, Mindy, I would say, give the city manager's office a call, discuss it with her, and we'll see what is possible. The number is 431-1000. And, and call and discuss that with the city manager, please. Teresa Garrity. Why are non-residents still entitled to use the beach? They, well, they aren't now, so we, we address that tonight. If you're allowing residents and limiting capacity, how will you be sure those residents who have purchased season passes will be able to get access to the beach? The answer is, we don't anticipate being a problem, since, like I said, we're not selling non-resident passes right now. So, just based on residents, we don't anticipate being a problem. We have three and a half miles of beach for our 34,000 residents to spread out across, so we don't anticipate being a problem. Like I said, the worst you may encounter is somebody asking you to walk one block east or west to a less crowded beach. And then, Roy Lester, my understanding that FOIL requests are not being responded to, what is the delay and when it will be resolved? When the pandemic started, New York State basically suspended FOIL responses until June 1st, because everybody was basically ordered to send staff home. Remember, we're still operating, most of the staff is not coming in, they're, they're at home under state order. So, the state delayed responses until June 1st, so we're coming up on June 1st, I guess, in less than two weeks, but they should be, they'll be presumably worked upon then. So, that was, that was the last question, so thanks, everyone, for joining us, and hope everyone has a good evening. Take care.
Before we end, I just wanted to say a special thank you to the Christmas Angels and all the nonprofits for helping our community with food and security, and thank you to Nancy Schulman for pointing out that the census is very important. We have the statistics, and we're just above 50% in our responses. This is very important, it will count for 10 years of funding. If we don't get ourselves counted now, our roads, our schools, our programs, they will not be funded, they will not see the numbers that we have here. Your home, fill it out. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, that's, that's a very good point. Keep in mind that the, the aid we get from the state and the federal government is based on the census results. So, the less people respond, the less we get, and that means the more you got to pay locally in taxes to make up that difference. So, the census is only 10 questions, there's nothing about citizenship, it's very straightforward, easy to do. You could do it online, too, you don't have to mail it if you don't want. So, yeah, please, because heaven knows, we need all the money we can get, so please do your census. And with that, have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Dave.
Good night, thanks, Dave.